It's fine, it's fine. That's my pout face. That's my pouty face, right? I'm fine. This is fine. I'm just that little dog meme with the fire all around me. This is fine. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our regular board meeting for Wednesday, March 27th, 2024. Before we begin, I would like to acknowledge with gratitude that we are here on the unceded territories of the Quetzal, Malahat, Subacit, Halalt, Peneliket, Staminus, Laxan, Paukachin, Diddy Dat and Pachi Dat nations, whose people have walked gently here for thousands of years. And with that, we will get underway. Mr. Robbins, before we begin, are there any changes to the agenda today?
Yes, sir, there are not.
With no changes to the agenda, I look for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, moved by Director Smartman, seconded by Director Nicholson. All those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Robbins.
A second item of business, recommendation at the minutes of the regular board meeting of March 13, 2024 be adopted.
If there are no errors or omissions, a move by Director Douglas, seconded by Director Segal, all those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Robbins.
There are no, um, there's no business arising from the minutes and we'll go into public input period. And the public input period is to offer the public an opportunity to comment on an agenda item before the board considers the item. The public input period procedure policy allows for allotment of 15 minutes where the speaker is welcome to comment on any items on the agenda up to the maximum of three minutes. This excludes items that are or have been subject to a public hearing. The speaker should comment in a polite, calm and courteous manner using respectful language and civility and decorum. We don't have anybody online, but there are two people that I'm aware of in the gallery today that wish to provide some input for you. Bob Day, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium? And if you could key the microphone there by pushing the gray button, thank you.
Something tells me he knows how that thing works. Welcome, Mr. Day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and it's amazing how nervous I get from this side of the side of the table, so, uh, please bear with me. Sometimes I tend to ramble, but I only have three minutes, so I'll be able to cut things short, so. I'm here today as a resident of Lake, the town of Lake Cowichin, also as the current Chair of Tourism Cowichin and the Vice Chair of Couch and Housing Association. And I only mention that because I'm speaking today to items R1 and R3 that have come to you before the board from Electoral Area Services. So at that meeting, we had sent in an urgent letter asking for some engagement moving forward, and that was before we knew, that letter was written before we knew that the staff was a little further down the road than we expected. And so we've looked at those recommendations and, and realized what's coming down the pipe. And we just want you to make aware that the Couch and Housing Association and Tourism Couch and would like to be engaged as much as possible and help you with the process with, you know, when it comes to the webinar and any public engagement moving down the line. We, we acknowledge that certain recommendations from the province have to be enacted. But there is a few things like temporary use permits and stuff like that that could use some help from both organizations and explain to the public and our stakeholders. And when I talk about stakeholders, when it comes to Airbnbs, they are a stakeholder of Tourism Couch and we like to advocate for what they do because the, and the Airbnbs are not only accommodations for the tourism industry and it's the millions of dollars that brings the Couch and Valley. And with the lack of hotels, we don't want to wipe out that industry. So, and I know you have no intention of doing that. So there are also attractions. There, you know, some of these places, I think we've all could admit, maybe not here today, that we use those online accommodations and they're just beautiful places that you wouldn't find in a regular status quo hotel room, so. I just want, would like to acknowledge that as well as the economic benefit it brings to the, the valley. So when it comes to temporary use permits and moving forward and, and items that are connected to the workforce housing strategy, both entities that I'm a member of Tourism Couch and the Couch and Housing Association, look at that and say that it's going to provide a couple more levels of bureaucracy that people are going to have to try and navigate out there, and they're already having a hard time navigating what's in front of them now, so. We've heard it from the stakeholders, do they, through the engagement, I was present at the Couch and Housing and Tourism Couch and ones, and we heard it from the people. The contractors and their pickup trucks were telling us, we don't need another level of bureaucracy to navigate to get stuff done. So perhaps we could consider that as we move forward as well, and with temporary use permits and, and putting them back into community organizations, it's a great idea, but perhaps we could do that ahead of the, ahead of the game and just give staff with the advisement of those groups beforehand and do that, because otherwise it's going to just been two, three, four months in that process, because we all know how long it takes to go from one desk to desk to desk to desk, so. Thank you very much, and Tourism Cowichin, especially myself being the chair, would just like to play any kind of role in helping getting the message out and the right message, and so we can help people, you know, get their thoughts wrapped around what's coming down the pipe, so thank you very much for your time.
Nice timing. Mr. Day. Thank you. Mr. Robbins.
I know that Susan Kaufman might, has wanted to put, provide some input for you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and fellow directors. Um, I would like to speak to correspondence one. The UBCM resolutions that the ministry has applied to. I was really happy to see that the board took those to the ministry. When it comes to intersection improvements and the, the like in my area, I have been trying for 10 plus years for intersection improvements and let it drop because we weren't getting anywhere. We got a new road manager, so I emailed him twice with no response. So hopefully the CVRD could help be an advocate for that. I too would like to respond to CR2, the ESC minutes of the last meeting. Like the previous speaker, I'm really concerned about the lack of engagement with the public on the sorry, the short-term rental bill 35 stuff, so. I was concerned and I brought it up at the meeting, but I didn't hear anyone address it. In the second paragraph of the Advisory Planning Commissions in Mr. Tippett's report, it said, since the OCP is regional, a common position on such an amendment should be arrived at the board level, and I don't understand what that means. Does that mean since we've gone to a regional OCP, does that mean that our APCs are becoming redundant? Like, and our, our local area plans becoming redundant? I think that's something that really needs to be addressed and looked into. Also at the meeting, there was a mention of an informal poll of APC members to guide a director. And if it hasn't been referred to the APCs in a formal way, I don't know about the propriety of doing informal polls. I would strongly urge you, like I asked previous to the public input at the last ESC meeting, that you strongly consider consulting with the public and those legal providers, because these changes are going to have profound impacts on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Anyone else for public input before we move on? And just press the blue button on the, the microphone base there and it should come on. Yep.
Hi, Eric Directors, through the chair. Today, Sammy for you to shed light on the pressing issue of our local economy and the fabric of our community in the Couch and Valley with regards to our one and our three. For me, I'm a host and run a small business that's, that has to do with short-term rentals in the Couch and Valley. They've become an integral part of our region's tourism and ecosystem. They provide visitors with unique and personalized experiences that they cannot get from hotel rooms. They allow families to come together and immerse themselves in the beauty and charm of our own valley, which we want to bring people into this area and show them all that we have to offer. Beyond offering accommodations, our rentals serve as vital sources of income for many local residents. And considering the impact on our small businesses from these bed and breakfasts to charming cottages nestled in the countryside, short-term rentals contributed to the diversity of our tourism offerings. They attract visitors who seek experiences and inject much-needed revenue into our local economies. Removing them would not only deprive tourists of options, but jeopardize the survival of these businesses. Sierra Acton quoted this morning on CBC that Shawnagans are recreational and tourism destination. How are we to offer them an area to come in view without the accommodations that we have to provide them with? As there is no accommodations for anyone in the south of our community in the CVRD from Shawnagan to Cobble Hill, we only have Airbnbs and bed and breakfasts to host. We also pay quite a bit of money into the CVRD to promote tourism in the area. The accommodation tax is meant to support initiatives that attract visitors and boost our local economy. By removing short-term rentals, we're undermining the very purpose of this tax and we, they would have no place to stay. I myself operate our own home as a short-term rental in Shawnagan Lake. We've injected just $7,300 into this accommodation tax last year alone. That is a lot to say over the 700 other accommodations that are up now on Airbnb and what they put into the economy as well. Not to mention Airbnb alone in BC paid over $93 million in taxes last year. We are also overlooking that there are jobs at stake here from cleaners to maintenance, to property managers, to tour guides and small businesses that rely on these people to come into our community. And their vital incomes for families and support the livelihoods of our neighbors. Removing these would result in job losses and exacerbate our economic hardship in our community where we're already facing a rise in groceries, property taxes and proposed carbon taxes. I think the repercussions are over, are understated and that we all deserve a chance to look at this at a bigger, as the bigger picture. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input before we move on? Seeing none, Mr. Robbins.
You have no delegations today. I'm not sure if there's anything for you to report, Mr. Chair.
I wasn't thinking of a big report, but I do want to say last week, on Friday, World Water Day was a really exciting day for our region, but in particular with the announcement in Lake Cowichin, on the Couch and Weir funding for the final funding component for the raising of the Couch and Weir, the upgrade replacement of the existing Couch and Weir. So exciting. I know that we're really, even though it's a very rainy day today, concerned about the snowpack and the water levels heading into what's expected to be another long dry summer. So while we grapple with those short-term realities, it is exciting that we were able to make that official announcement on Friday. The worst-kept secret in the BC since it was talked about openly during the budget. But really exciting time for work that's gone back decades. I think I said decade and I was corrected. But for, for many of us who have been involved in this work, we all recognize that we're standing on the shoulders of people that go back before us that started these efforts through things like the Couch and Water Use Plan and the coming together of the CVRD and Couch and Tribes and generations of leadership and community members in the stewardship community have advocated for this work to get done. So we're not quite there yet, but we do feel that the provincial government through the Ministry of Water, Lands and Resource Stewardship, best acronym in government, walrus, is committed to a new and novel approach, and I said it that way because I'll put air quotes around new and novel, because that's what the minister said. Approach to licensing and liability issues with such a, a major piece of infrastructure on, on one of Canada's heritage rivers. But it's just a really exciting time for Cowichin, and that was complemented by another, a number of other announcements throughout the region. Investing in water security, over $13 million in Ladysmith. And I know that there were several other projects in the, in the region and sort of adjacent from hundreds of thousands to millions of dollars for, for water security projects this year, so. You know, water is a priority for all of us and it's an exciting time for the valley, so I'll leave it at that and we'll move on. Mr. Robbins.
Single piece of correspondence from Counselor Trish Mandewo. That's the UBCM president, president with regards to provincial response to 2023 resolutions that CVRD brought forward to that gathering last year.
Thank you. So it's there for information. This could, what, these kinds of things for information and discussion can go on a long way. I'm getting used to these sort of well-worded but disappointing responses from the government of BC when it comes to local government priorities, however. I do see Director Morrison, but Ms. Miles Wilson, I believe, wants to speak to something in particular first.
Hi. Yeah, I just wanted to remind you that you do have an advocacy section in your strategic plan. Some of these topics actually reflect on some of the things that you wanted to have a little bit more discussion on how to advocate and which avenue you'd like to take, and so it's, it's a standard response that the province has provided. No surprises there. But what I would propose is maybe coming back to the board with a discussion about what the advocacy piece looks like more broadly with the eight or nine issues that you've already identified in your strategic plan, and then we can get some direction from you at that time on how you'd like to proceed.
Great, thank you. And with AVICC on the horizon, not quite as important and critical as UBCM, but also an opportunity, especially as it's in Victoria this year, we should see some ministers and senior provincial staff there during the conference for lobbying and advocacy opportunities. Any other thoughts on this before we move on? Oh, Director Morrison, then Director Nicholson.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and I guess nothing surprising in the responses that we've had to these issues. I just wanted to take note and I, I thought that most of the provincial staff were getting better at familiarizing themselves with the difference between a municipality and a regional district, but I think in the second, or in the response to NR 67, the cost recovery, it, the very last statement at all of these is that local governments currently have the authority to set tax rates as they see appropriate to meet local needs. And that's been a a huge issue because of the provincial government review and freezing of the land component of that very complex formula that they use to determine the rates in which the, they're set by the province. And, and I've said this many times, when at one point, over 50% of every dollar raised in my electoral area came from class seven forestry lands. It's now in the 35% range, so that 15% had to be made up by somebody, and of course it falls to residences, so. Clearly, yes, municipalities can set the rates for the various classes, but simply isn't the case in, in electoral areas and I, you know, that's one area that I think if we were to do any follow-up or in future advocacy, I'd like to see it done in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. At least it said local governments, but they were wrong in the use of the terminology, but at least it didn't say municipalities when they're talking to old regional districts this time. Thank you for that. Director Nicholson.
Yeah, so I guess AVICC is coming up this month or April, right? So I think we need to have this discussion pretty, pretty soon.
It won't, won't be today, but maybe.
No, no, no. Is that, is that going to be possible?
Sure, yeah.
And, and one thing I think that we need, like, several of these things were about roads and that electoral area services issue really. It would be nice to set up, to see if we can set up, but they, they say that they're going to work with us.
I love the response because that's what I thought, too.
So it would be worthwhile talking about setting up something that we can hold them to, right, on that front? Sooner rather than later, because, yeah.
Do we, do we want to get it as a motion then? Do you want, also one at EASC regarding roads?
That particular issue we need to deal with as electoral area, but I mean, it's really important, I think, to hold them to it.
So would it be a motion to discuss rural roadways at EASC and broader advocacy at the board next, next EASC and next board meeting? Or Committee of the Whole? So moving that, okay, seconded by Director Segal, so to be clear, it would be that rural roadway discussion for the next Electoral Area Services Committee meeting and a broader advocacy discussion for the next Committee of the Whole meeting prior to AVICC. And Director Acton.
Well, just, I think our conversation could be even more broad, MOTI issues. Not just roads.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take a can we just leave it rural roadways or I'm going to have to ask for amendment because there's no such thing as a friendly amendment, but recognizing that other Ministry of Transportation issues can be included. I don't know if anybody drove here today from the north, but that highway is a tragedy, but that's another conversation. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Clear as mud, Mr. Robbins.
Clear as mud. I'm just looking what was on your docket for the next Committee of the Whole. It's a very not, I'm not sure I'd use the word juicy, but it's a, it's a, it's a large agenda. Oh, your mic was off. Ah, well, then I said the word. You're going to be very busy April 10th.
Okay, well, we'll be busy April 10th and we'll schedule accordingly. Thank you, Mr. Robbins.
Moving to Committee and Commission reports, there was a report and recommendations of the Couch and Core Recreation Commission meeting of March 14, 2024. Two recommendations, Director Abbott.
Director, I, I would move these recommendations, especially in light of this morning's conversation.
Thank you. So we have a seconder, seconded by Director Douglas. Any further discussion on those? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Robbins.
Moving to CR2, report and recommendations of the Electoral Area Service Committee meeting of March 2024. Director Morrison, there's a number of blocks here. The first set of recommendations for all of the board and then the following blocks for Electoral Area Directors.
Director Morrison.
I think Chair, I would, since these have all been published, I would move.
Chair. Sorry, I've got a
Director McClinton?
Yep, apologies. I'm just hoping we can pull, sorry, so I can recuse myself for those two of them, the R1 and R3.
Yeah, those don't come up in this block, though, Director McClinton. I'll come to you when that block comes up.
Thank you. I'm sorry that I misunderstood.
This is the first block of three, C1, C2 and R6, I believe.
Yeah, that's what I'm moving.
Thank you. Second, hi Director Segal. So that's for all directors. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? Motion carries now to declarations. Director McClinton, before we get to the next block.
Just for the CR2, R1 and R3, I'd like to recuse myself for perceived conflict of interest.
So we'll pull those and we'll deal with the other items first. And I saw Director Acton put her hand up as well. Sorry, did you have something you needed to? Okay, so we'll pull those ones. Is there others to be pulled? Director Segal.
I'd like to pull R2 number two. I think it's number two.
Malahat, not include suites within ALR?
Yeah, I just want to speak to that one.
Okay.
I'm going to start at the top.
They can go one at a time. Yeah. And then maybe we'll hold the ones where there's declarations for conflict of interest until the end, but we'll, we'll go through each one and see if there's.
So I'm assuming that the first one that I will be dealing with is going to be the R2 one. Does that make sense?
R2 number one?
Well, it says R2 and there's six items attached to it, because I think all of all of the R1, R1 and R3 are all the ones that people want to speak to. So I will move R2, items one through six.
No, she just wants to speak to it, so. R2, one through six has been moved. We have a seconder. And then I believe we have a proposed amendment, Director Abbott.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to add R7, or I'd like to add item seven to R2, reading that proposed zoning amendment by law number 4574 include provisions for detached suites on lands that are located within the A1 zone within Electoral Area D.
So that amendment's been proposed to add a number seven to the, to that group as Director Abbott just read out, and that's been seconded by Director Acton? Discussion.
Hey, I think we need some clarification on that, because I think everyone was included except those that withdrew. Isn't that what happened on this one? Looking to Director Segal.
Okay, so was, was Area D already included without a motion?
That was my understanding. No, it wasn't. Mr. Elf, can you help us with this?
So sorry, the understanding seems to be from the Electoral Area Directors that if they aren't in this list, that they were included already. And that they had to ask for that they not be included.
Mr. Chair, that is correct. So, so Director Abbott's proposed resolution is.
Out of order.
It's not, it's separate.
But it's surplus-fluous because he's already included without.
No, so Area D permits detached suites, but not within the A1 zone. And so what Director Abbott has requested is that suites, detached suites be permitted in the A1 zone.
Okay, understood. It's been, the amendment has been moved and seconded, so we'll go on the amendment first. Anyone wanted to discuss? This is the Area D amendment to be including suites in Area D's A1 zone. Director Marvin, then Nicholson.
You might rule me out of order, but I'm finding this interesting. Because, so I have a question on Area H. When would that, because I'm try, I thought.
During this amendment, because this is about Area D, but I'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Director Nicholson.
Thank you. I would like to understand why that is happening, that is being proposed.
Director Abbott, do you want to speak to your motion?
When in 2013, Area D passed an award-winning OCP, the purview of the province was to minimize the amount of accommodation on agriculturally A1-zoned properties. There seems to be a change of heart. There certainly is in my area, and it's, there's a desire to find more space for additional dwellings. This is not in the Cokesala watershed. There are no A1 properties that, that will impact the Cokesala watershed, so. It seemed that by limiting, limiting such a move for just A1 properties deals with the upland zones of Area D.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Director Segal and Nicholson oppose that amendment carries. So now we're talking about a block that's been moved and seconded and now including an amendment that is number seven. So this is on R2, one through seven. Director Segal.
Thank you. So I just wanted to share some comments about R2 number two. So the reason that I removed ALR lands within my area from second, having secondary suites is because it's not required at this time to include secondary suites on ALR land. And that we don't currently have any siting requirements on secondary dwellings on ALR, so there's nothing from preventing second homes from being built on the most farmable parts of an ALR property. And I just think we should be really conscious of preserving our farmable ALR land, and we haven't done any outreach consultation to the agricultural community yet, so I'd like to see that before moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion on R2, one through six plus one is seven? Oh, Director Marvin, so this might be about Area H.
So if classes, if staff could clarify the, what is permitted right now for detached for ALR land in Area H?
Sorry, through staff? Not to put you on the spot, but have you got that something by? Not to put you on the spot, but have you got that zoning bylaw handy?
I feel like I should be a walking zoning bylaw. I believe Ms. Ms. Wright is going to look that up for you. I'm gonna infer from Mr. Tippett's previous report, though, that if there wasn't a proposed change to the detached suite regulations for your area, it's because they're already permitted. But Ms. Wright can confirm that? Thank you.
Okay.
Two.
Two actors are larger.
Thank you, staff, for the for the shirt notice question.
Everybody's on their toes today. I feel like this is just the beginning of this item. Any further discussion on this? R two, one through seven. As amended, all those in favor? Electoral Area Directors only, and opposed? None opposed, motion carries. Back to you, Director Morrison.
R four. Yeah, I'll move R four.
R four, one and two. Seconded by Director Segal, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. Director Morrison?
R five.
R five's been moved, seconded by Director Segal, any discussion? Electoral Area Directors only, all those in favor? Any opposed, none opposed, motion carries. Now I think we're coming back to the top. So this would be Director McClinton, I believe you wanted to declare conflict on R one and R three?
Yeah, I'm gonna recuse myself for perceived conflict of interest. I'll hop off if somebody could shoot me a text when you're done.
Hey, thank you. Do you want to put him in the lobby? Or are you logging off, Director McClinton?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we're, so I think we'll deal with, what's your pleasure, Director Morrison?
One, one, two, and four, I think, makes sense.
Okay, R one, one, two, and four, as laid out on the agenda for Electoral Area Directors only, do we have a seconder? Seconded by Director Segal, any discussion? Director Acton.
I'm curious about separating all of these because I wanted to. Oppose opting in.
That's R one, three. That's the next one.
So then.
It's not this item.
The same. It was one, it doesn't change for one, two, and four. If number three were to fail, does one, two, and four change at all?
I don't believe so, Ms. Ralph, no.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on R one, one, two, and four? Director Nicholson?
I don't support. Thank you. I don't support this because I don't believe that we need to use temporary use permits for this particular short-term rental issue, and I think it sends the wrong message to people. I think that if you truly believe you need to have a short-term rental commercial operation going, then you should apply for rezoning.
Thank you. Any further discussion? This is for Electoral Area Directors only, Director Acton. I feel like I'm having deja vu while I watch the meeting.
I wasn't there, so sorry. I'm just trying to compartmentalize it all. So this item also speaks to or puts pressure, I think, on our capacity issues that we have. And just creating, it's creating a little bit of a work project and getting us sidetracked on items that we really need to be focusing on. So I'm gonna be opposing one, two, and four. This is this is an enforcement issue. And then and and we have funded it adequately. We just came out of a really brutal budget season, and all our decisions here are gonna cost us money that we don't need to spend. So I believe, anyway, so I'll be opposed to this, and then the next one, R R one, three point. I would like to speak to that along the same lines.
We'll get to that shortly. Maybe later, Lee. We'll see how it goes. Ms. Ralph?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Pressman reminded me that it was the January twenty fourth meeting, I think, where the board actually directed staff to to work on temporary use permits, so this would be a component of that. And I wanted to also mention that, well, two things. There is obviously a statutory process that goes along with amending an official community plan and introducing temporary use permit framework, so there's opportunities for public engagement and amendment to the, you know, the the framework through that process. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that at next week's Electoral Area Services Committee, I will be providing an update on the Land Use Services Department work plan for the coming year and activities, and there'll be an opportunity to to look at that work plan, and if you want to prioritize items over some things over others, then that discussion can occur at next week's meeting.
Thank you. I know it's Electoral Area Director only, but during public input, we heard about short-term rentals in the South. My understanding, and again, I'm not intimately familiar with everyone's zoning bylaw, but that short-term rentals are not allowed presently within areas A, B, and C? So those wouldn't those those operations already be operating against the existing bylaws?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. So the vast majority of zones within the CVRD electoral areas do not permit short-term rentals, so the you know, hundreds of short-term rentals that are operating in our region are probably operating unlawfully. There are four specific zones that staff identified where short-term rentals are explicitly explicitly permitted in the zoning.
Yeah.
Area A is CD five zone, Area D's W eight water lot residential zone, Area F's CD two comprehensive development lakeside two zone, and Area I's LR eleven lake view recreation recreational eleven zone.
Okay, thank you. Just just for clarity, because that kind of triggered me, because I've been watching the ESC meetings, even though I don't participate, and recognize that there's been conversation around that small number of properties that have some zoning.
That's right.
And some of them are not exercising it, some are, but.
Yeah, and and I want to add that it is possible in many zones to operate a bed and breakfast operation, however.
It's very different.
The majority of those zones require the the owner to live on site.
Yeah, and it's like a room within, can't have like a separate suite kind of thing.
Precisely.
Right, thank you. I think I saw Director Morrison. So sorry, we're still on our one, one, two, and four, I believe.
Well. No, I'm gonna pass.
Okay, so do we have any further discussion on R one, one, two, and four? Seeing none, I'll call the question Electoral Area Directors only, all those in favor? And opposed? Directors Nicholson and Acton opposed, motion carries. Director Morrison, I think that takes us to R one, three?
Yes, I move it.
Do we have a second or seconded by Director Segal? Director Abbott?
With a week's reflection and time to accept what I've learned from staff, that except for eighteen residences or properties within Area D, short-term rentals are not allowed. I am persuaded to wish to opt out, and therefore I would vote against R one, three this week.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm connected. I hate to interject into Electoral Area business, but if you have eighteen authorized.
The the impact would be that eighteen that are allowed at present by opting in, I have just taken away what a privilege that they already they already enjoy.
Ms. Ralph.
Mr. Chair, I think this might be helpful. So where where there's a problem in those zones that I previously mentioned, they also allow single detached dwelling or long-term residential use. So where you have a zone that allows long-term and short-term commercial accommodation uses, the provincial opt-in provision says that the owner must reside in the principal residence. So that takes away in some cases the opportunity to use that that building for short-term commercial accommodation in its entirety. So that's where that's why the staff had recommended not proceeding with an opt-in provision because, you know, the potential challenges for those, I think it's eighty-one parcels within CVRD.
Just so I can manage this procedurally, is there an opportunity now for Area D to say that opt in under Bill thirty-five other than Area D?
So yes, so that's correct. So the CVRD can choose to opt in for to request to opt in for all electoral areas.
Or select.
Or select.
So I might suggest that instead of voting against the resolution, you put a motion on the floor to amend it to exclude Area D. Rather than voting against it. That would that would be now. It's been moved and seconded, so.
I I would move an amendment.
To exclude Area D.
To exclude Area D.
Do we have a seconder for that? Seconded by Director Deck. So we have amendment on the floor. We're gonna have to go through these one by one, so to the other Electoral Area Directors, if you'd like yours added to the excluded list, then we'll deal with each amendment in order. So on the amendment, I believe that would be for Electoral Area Directors only as well. Not Mr. Ninety-eight percent over here.
Thank you.
Excuse me? Sorry, if you have something to say, Director Acton, I can recognize you. Go ahead, Director Acton.
Sorry. The eighty-five other residents that are.
It was in the staff report and.
F, though, right? Or I?
Sorry, oh, well, why do we deal with the with the amendment? I was speaking to the amendment that's on the floor, and then I'll take other questions. So this is to exclude Area D under R one, three. This is fun procedural stuff, eh? Mr. Robbins, live for it. Any more discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed, none opposed? Area D is added as excluded from R one, three. Now we're back to the main motion as amended, Director Deck.
All right, I'd like to make an amendment, removing Area I from the.
So.
I would like to opt out.
So. Yeah, I can. Can I just get a quick raise of hands who wants their area excluded from the opt-in? There you see, oh, we already got Area D on there. Area C, I. Okay, we'll just deal with those two areas separately. So we've got C is on the floor. It's been moved in, or sorry, Area I is on the floor. Moved and seconded. So seconded by Director Abbott. Ms. Ralph?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt your parliamentary procedure. I just wanted to remind the Electoral Area Directors that the request to opt in must be made annually. So this year it has to be made before the end of this month to take effect in May second. Next year it will be by the end of March to take effect in November of that year. So there is a there is an annual opportunity to request opt in as well.
So if you've opted in, can you then decide you made a mistake and opt out the next year?
I believe the opt-in provision is only in effect for a year.
Okay.
Director McGonagall, probably.
Well, we'll figure that out next year. So we've got an amendment to exclude Area I on the floor. Any discussion on the amendment? This is on the amendment to exclude Area I. Discussion on the amendment only. Seeing none, Electoral Area Directors only, all in favor? Any opposed? None opposed. I'm gonna take the last exclusion amendment first, and then I'll go to questions on the main motion as amended, Director Harriet. Or alternate director. Here, when you're here, you're here.
Questions for you, Chair? Is there another opportunity to visit this?
Not after March of this year until next year.
This is one thing Director Wilson didn't discuss with me.
Okay.
A little bit unsure as to as to his.
Intentions. So I would say Director Harriet, like if if he, I know how focused he is on this role. If if he felt that he wanted exclusion from this motion, I'm I'm guessing he would have talked to you about it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll blame you.
Okay, so now back to the main motion as amended, Director Acton, you had a question? Okay, so we're on the main motion as amended. This is R one, three with the exclusions of Area D and I. Only. Director Acton?
Sorry, I was trying to get clarity from staff. So you've been asking about this.
Yeah, you'd like to move to exclude Area B?
There's some areas in Area B that are affected, so just to be safe, I think we would like to opt out. I believe the whole region should opt out. This is kind of a silly gigging, but I would like Area B to be.
So Director Acton is moving to exclude Area B from the opt-in provision. That's been seconded by Director Abbott? Any further discussion on the amendment? Director Nicholson?
I would just like Director Acton to be clear that in Electoral Area B, there are no zones that permit both single detached dwellings and short-term rentals. According to staff, you're not on the list, so it.
Ms. Pressman?
Through the chair, I think the the question is with regards to C four zone in Area B, which permits a number of tourist accommodation uses and only permits a single-family dwelling that's accessory to those uses. So so the the opt-in provision wouldn't doesn't apply to the the tourist accommodation portion of it. It's it's only whether it like it would only apply if if an accessory, single-family dwelling on those properties is being used as a short-term rental.
I just want to try and keep some order in the meeting, if we could. So microphones, please, and recognized by the chair, if you do have a further question from staff of clarity.
I believe the property that I'm thinking about has both. It it, even if you read it in our community plan, it describes it as like a resort and a house.
So I think what Ms. Pressman was, maybe I'm not gonna try and interpret. I I think I understood this as the opting out would be only to protect the right for the second, the house to be also used as tourist accommodation. The tourist accommodation that already exists is our, even with an opt-in, is fine. Right? So what you're asking for is to allow that one house on that tourist accommodation property to be rented out as a short-term rental by excluding yourself from the opt-in? Is that what you're intending?
What my concern was that suddenly the the zoning on these properties would are zoned short-term, and there's a bunch of other ones on the lake as well, but apparently they're not, they're zoned R two, but they are just short-term.
But that would be illegal.
Properties.
R two.
The, anyway.
Ms. Ms. Ralph?
Not allowed. I can't, you know, speak to the legality of, you know, individual properties, but I mean, I will say this. There was previously a process whereby a South Couch No OCP was adopted, and there was a subsequent adoption of a new zoning bylaw for areas A and C. B was not included due to some legal proceedings at the time, so the bylaw for Area B is quite antiquated and may not accurately reflect what current, you know, community vision or policy is. And in, for instance, there is, I believe, a zone that allows seasonal cottages, but that zone isn't specifically allowing those cottages to be used for short-term accommodation, and that's why it wasn't flagged by Mr. Tippett. Having said that, you know, if if any director feels that, you know, they're not comfortable with their area opting into this requirement for single family, then then you know, you that that's your prerogative, and as again, as I say, there's an opportunity to do it next year.
So the the amendment is on the floor. It's been moved and seconded. So that would be to exclude Area B. Is there any more discussion on the amendment? And this is only on the opt-in provision, right? So all the other regulations and stuff will apply. Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed to the amendment? So the amendment carries. So now we've got the motion to opt in less areas D, I, and B. It's a final call. On the motion as amended, Director Segal, welcome.
Thank you. Um, I think this is a really important moment to prioritize housing. I went to visit, I have a zone in my area, Sandy Beach Estates. They're allowed short-term rentals, but they run as a holdings company and are required to be nonprofit, so they do not run any short-term rentals. So there's no unintended. So there's no unintended consequences for my area. And, you know, what the intention here is, is to prevent people from running commercial businesses, owning multiple properties and running them as short-term rentals, taking homes away from families. It's not to prevent somebody who owns a home and has a secondary suite that they run as a B and B to support their mortgage. It's to prevent housing being turned into a business which is influencing the housing crisis that we have.
Thank you. I have Director Morrison and then Acton on the motion as amended.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I, uh. We've rehashed a fair bit of what we did at committee, and I think that for me, it's, it's simple, it's some pretty simple facts. Um. For the vast majority of residential properties in the regional district, a, uh, standalone short-term rental is illegal. It's against the law. If someone has a short-term rental in a residence in which they reside principal residence or has someone residing in, in that property as a principal residence, then they can operate as a bed and breakfast. We have a housing crisis. It's that simple. And the provincial government has, has indicated that they want to, with this legislation, uh, convert back a whole bunch of long-term rental stock and make it available, increase the supply for families when these have been converted to essentially an illegal, non-permitted use. And it's not gonna affect all of them. It's not gonna shut down an industry and it's probably gonna make a few things, uh, uh, it's gonna be tight for a little while until we can get the overall situation um, clarified and legalized. But for right now, the message that I wanna send is if you wanna operate a bed and breakfast in your home in which you reside, or if you, you've, uh, got a principal residence, that's the message that I wanna send. And I encourage those of you who have opted out to support the rest of us that wanna proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Acton.
Well, so it's comments like this that make me, that are confusing the community and I think even ourselves, because my understanding was opting in and opting out was the same thing. In the end, it's still not permitted. If we're opting out, it's not permitting, it's not permitting, it's not permitting, uh, Airbnb mansions to be rented in Shawning and Lake is already not permitted, and the province has said it's not permitted. And so by, and I listened to last week's meeting and it was continuously declared that if we opt out, I, I mean, that if we opt in, we are just, it's a political message. So it was the same thing, but a political message. We had staff coming to us saying it's best to opt out and for, for the reasons of, um, the implications that are happening to, you know, almost like a hundred properties. So, and, and that was the staff recommendation. Staff, uh, so I, I have an issue with going against this. I'm gonna be voting against this, even though Area B has this title of opting out, because my understanding is it's the same. And if it's not, please staff, jump in now. Um.
It's important that we maybe clarify that. My understanding is opting in provides provincial information sharing, builds the database, and allows some provincial enforcement resources to be. Sorry, Ms. Trow.
Mr. Chair, so, um, through you.
Less the impact of Bill thirty-five.
Um, so Bill thirty-five as a whole is a, a collection of regulations um, that will apply with the exception of this um, opt-in provision, which is optional for electoral areas. And so um, by requesting to opt in and, and, and then, um, the province adding, um, certain CVRD electoral areas to the regulation, it will mean that the province will then enforce the regulation, which is that um, there's a principal residence requirement where short-term rentals are, are legal, where they're allowed. That's, that's, that's the only piece, so.
Sorry, and municipalities under ten thousand people, not just electoral areas.
Well, I was just talking about.
Yeah, yeah. Director Acton.
But that's what our zoning says already.
Sorry, I misunderstood. I thought that if you opted in, the province would enforce those regulations, um, not just on ones that were allowed under zoning, but not allowed under their regulations. So I thought it would take some burden off our enforcement staff, but what you're saying is that's not the case, because it would be a zoning issue first.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, the CVRD, um, by law enforcement officers will enforce CVRD regulations.
Right.
Um, the province will be responsible, responsible for enforcing their regulations, which include the principal residence requirement.
Got it.
Yeah.
Man, I love running our EASC meetings. Uh. Uh, okay, you have a follow-up?
Well, I, I was in the middle of.
Okay, you said they needed to step up now.
I said, please step up if I'm incorrect on this, that it's the same thing. Um, and I just wanted to kind of state why I was voting against this. Also, um, some other things is we didn't, zero consultation with the community. Uh, not the APC, not the community anyway, and I know that there's not really a way to have a public hearing, so that's off as well. Um, and going against a staff recommendation, and this is gonna be more budget in, um, in the future. We have already put a hundred thousand dollars for a enforcement officer to gather the information, and I'm probably the person here who, who, this can sound bad, needs the least amount of information. I'm just not that personality type who needs lots and lots and lots of information, but I truly believe we are making a decision with very little of, of the data that we should be having when we, when we're deciding to opt in, when there's really very few examples of electoral areas who have decided to do that. So, anyway, I'm gonna, anyway, thank you so much.
Thanks. Uh, Director Martman.
Have to go with my right hand here. And I've thought this one through, like Director Abbott said, you know, he had a week to think through this, and I keep reflecting back on Mr. Tippett's comment that opting in is about, it's just one aspect of Bill thirty-five, and that's the principal resident requirement. And then obviously the other aspect that I think of is the impact to my electoral area. Uh, a lot of ALR land, and, um, this Bill thirty-five does not apply to ALR land or, um, so it's not an issue for farmers, uh, per se. And then the other piece that I, I think about is what does my neighbor do, um, in the RDN? And so the RDN, when I contacted her, she said, no, they, the same, they have the same type of staff recommendation, and they chose not to opt in. It is go, went with the, um, staff recommendation. And I, and, and she was very interested in like, well, why are you thinking about um, opting into it? And like, um, Director Segal, I have the same kind of impression that, uh, this is a signal to people that, um, that is interested in where their investment should be, and that we're saying as directors that, or I'm saying as a director by opting in, that this is not where you should be investing. Um, if you want to have a principal resident requirement, fine, you can stay, you know, area, I'm, I'm comfortable with that because you can run a B and B. But if you're not, um, short-term rentals will go through a process of maybe a temporary use permit and perhaps a business license, um, requirement. And that will, that's where the, actually the devil's gonna be in the details. It's not really about opting in or opting out. It's going to be whether we set up and how we set up a temporary use permit, and also whether we are gonna use a business license as our way of enforcement and compliance. So to make a, uh, you know, to try to simplify it, I don't think we're going to, I don't think I'm going to make a any difference by opting or opting out, other than, than signaling that this is the route that we're looking for in the future. Um, and, you know, maybe the future is only until we get to three percent vacancy. But at least for this future that we have this crisis, it's a start. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna call the question, uh, as amended. All those in favor, electoral area directors only, any opposed? Director Acton opposed, the motion carries as amended. All right, clear as mud. Uh, gonna take, I, I thought we could get through the rest of the agenda in just a few minutes, but I don't trust it. So we're gonna take a ten-minute recess. We'll be back at two forty-five.
Yes, Director McLinson.
Yeah, maybe, we'll see. We gets, he gets ten minutes to rejoin. Now we're back. Uh, thank you, Mr. Robbins. Uh, I think we're still with Director Morrison on R three.
That is correct.
So it's been moved, seconded by Director Segal. Any discussion on R three is the business licensing investigation? Direction to staff to investigate business licensing. Any discussion? Seeing none, electoral area directors only, all those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries.
I'll let, uh.
And that.
Only concludes my long-winded report.
Thank you, Director Morrison. Mr. Robbins?
Uh, there was nothing pending from, uh, the committee of the whole earlier today, so we will move.
That concludes my report.
Thank you for your, uh, brevity and concise report, Director McGonigal. Mr. Robbins?
Staff reports. SR one is a report from the Acting General Manager Corporate Services Department with regards to Couch and Housing Association Development Project Plan and Bridge Funding Request. There is a recommendation. And may I read that out to you, or did you wanna pause?
I, uh, go ahead, read the recommendation out and I'll go to Officer Hightower.
That the Couch and Valley Regional District CVRD entered a two-year extension of the Financial Contribution Agreement with the Couch and Housing Association, CHA, for the period of January one, twenty twenty-four to December thirty, thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Pidal.
I can introduce the report if you like, uh, or else I can just, uh, offer an opportunity for questions.
Uh, we'll go for questions. I think Director Douglas has something he wants to highlight, and then Director Martman.
Yeah, just the, uh, the staff report notes, um, breaking up the twenty twenty-four pay, payment into two payments, fifty percent April, fifty percent August. However, the schedule A so refers that hundred percent payment in August. Just wondering if staff wanted to, uh, uh, move that we, uh, update the, uh, the schedule and reflect the, uh, recommendation in the staff report.
Mr. Pidal.
I would, uh, I would move that we recommend, uh, that we update, uh, the staff report to reflect the actual contribution agreement, uh, in, in further discussions with finance after the fact. Um, we are moving to a hundred percent, hundred percent.
Okay.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Thank you. So it has reflected in the schedule.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I've got Director Martman and then Morrison.
That was my question. Thanks.
I love details. Director Morrison.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and I, I wired this through to, uh, staff, uh, yesterday, I think. Just a question around the two-thirds, one-third, and, and I don't know whether it's important for this flexibility, but we, you know, the contribution agreement is for a maximum amount. And the, the way it's, it's laid out, it's essentially two-thirds, one-third, but I just wanted to, you know, float the ideas to whether or not we might, uh, want the flexibility that if there was a scenario where one year where there wasn't to be any anticipated, uh, project that they, uh, weren't requiring, or perhaps because of a tough budget year, we weren't wanting to, uh, make a full contribution to the Housing Trust Fund, but we wanted to ensure that they were continuing to be able to operate and do the planning and, and, uh, conduct the normal business that they would. If we were to reduce the amount that we're to go to, uh, for this function, we would necessarily have to reduce their operating amount. So I, I posed the question again as to whether or not, like I could see a scenario where we wanted to not make a contribution one year for a, uh, for a, um, towards the Housing Trust Fund, but we wanted to continue them operating. The way the agreement's laid out, that would be a challenge because operating amounts to a third of the total amount that's taxed. So any thoughts on that, or is finance had any discussion with you about that?
So, so with regards to the flexibility, um, I, I would agree that it's, you know, it can be at the direction of the board to adjust that flexibility. Um, essentially, uh, through the chair to Director Morrison, he's correct. So if, if for some reason you would wish to reduce the contribution amount at any given time, uh, it would bring the operational, uh, funding provided to the CHA to a level that may not be um, feasible for, for, for their continued operations. Um, if I may, I've got, um, I've got Daryl, uh, behind me here, that is the executive director of the, of the CHA. He had provided to me earlier in the, it was last week, my apologies, um, uh, budget for the coming year. And that, uh, on the administrative functions alone, it's about two ninety-six, two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. And so with that, um, yeah, if there were adjustments, it could create some significant hardship to, to the CHA.
Thank you. Um. So that's there for consideration. I would contend that with the rapidly increasing costs of capital works, uh, around housing projects, that if I would be loath to lower the allocation in any given year. I'd rather see that trust, uh, fund grow um, to accommodate the, the capital costs, but I, I see what Director Morrison's getting at. I'm sure he's not ju, directly suggesting we cut the capital allocation, however, wanting to protect, uh, the Couch and Housing Association if a future budget, uh, reduced that allocation. Um, I guess through the staff, though, um, I don't believe we have an enforced agreement with CHA. Um, any adjustments to that at this stage are a bit late? Is this something maybe we take into consideration for the next renewal in twenty twenty five for the twenty twenty-six budget year?
We could take that into consideration for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget year. Um, right now, we, you know, even the, uh, the financial contribution agreement, uh, is still a draft iteration. Uh, we did make attempts to try and, uh, direct some of the OAP funding, um, coming from the MRDT, MRDT towards, uh, some administrative costs to help cover some of the deficits. Unfortunately, that doesn't fit within the confines or parameters of the Ministry of Finance. Uh, that, that, uh, to the chair, uh, you'll see is that, um, not exceeding one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, uh, in year twenty twenty-four. And so, um, I think it would be good to come up for consideration in the following, in the following year.
Thank you. Uh, a question. So there's not a prescriptive recommendation here. You've heard the uh, clarity around the allocation of when those funds are paid. Um, this motion doesn't speak to any specificity within the schedules or the contract. Do we want to amend the recommended motion to speak to the, to honoring what's been put into the schedule? Sorry, Mr. Robbins?
Sorry, my understanding that the schedule, if in the agreement is correct.
That is correct.
A hundred, hundred. And so that is what you're asking for, the agreement that's presented to you, despite the fact that the, the report says otherwise.
Okay, so, so because it's saying that we enter into the extension of the Financial Contribution Agreement, the agreement attached is correct, so this motion is in order, safe?
Yeah. If that's.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so essentially what it'll be is you'll see Schedule A, Section Four, A and B would read one hundred percent in August, one hundred percent in August for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Which is what's there.
That's correct. In previous years, we did have the fifty, the fifty split.
Yep.
And then, uh, in speaking to finance in, in the last week, uh, we decided to move it to a hundred percent split now. And just be aware that that, um, that Section Four only speaks to the, the one-third amount for administrative costs, not for the Housing Trust.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Just a couple of the notes too that I wanna bring up, uh, with regards to, uh, the contribution agreement and the reasons why it is still in draft form. Um, there are discussions still with the ministry to, um, my, our insight is that we are likely not able to pull the administration fee off of the OAP funds. So for the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that, uh, the CVRD provides as financial contribution, um, the CVRD would actually take an administrative fee of two percent to that. That has been historical right through to two thousand eighteen. Uh, for the OAP fund, which is introduced this year for the first year, uh, the ministry wouldn't allow that holdback. And so I'm just, um, further confirming with the ministry to make sure that's the case, so that would be written into that. In addition, um, the contribution agreement will also provide some reporting, um, requirements of the CHA through to the CVRD that are a bit amplified, so that we can report back to the ministry too as to how the, uh, the ones, not exceeding one seventy-six would be used. So just some reporting stuff.
Thank you. I don't believe we have a motion on the floor as of yet, but I do hear from staff that the recommended resolution would be safe to reflect the contract. It's been moved and seconded by Director Douglas and Director Nicholson. Any further discussion? Director McGonigal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, as the CVRD liaise.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, as the CVRD liaise for, for this, um, group, I would piggyback my director's report on this as well.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, any opposed? None opposed, motion carries, Mr. Robbins.
And before I continue, Mr. Chair, if I will, I'm sorry to interject, but.
Any more, Director McGonigal?
Uh, I'd just like to congratulate the, uh, new executive director on, on taking on such a a momentous role and, and the board for all the work that they do there.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Robbins.
I was going to ask Director McGonigal whether or not that report satisfied the requirement for policy to report out on.
I don't believe it does, and I will bring one forward at a further date.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins.
We're going to bylaws, B one, which is, um, the recommendation is that CVRD bylaw number four, five, five-nine, Mill Spring Sewer System Service Amendment, that's a boundary extension by law twenty twenty-four, be adopted.
Moved by Director Segal, seconded by Director Morrison. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, any opposed? None opposed, motion carries, Mr. Robbins.
Right to question period. Question period is an opportunity to offer the public to ask a question regarding the business of the CVRD. The question period allows for an allotment of fifteen minutes, comprised of two parts. The first is reserved for questions directly related to agenda items. If there is time remaining, questions may be on a matter of public interest related to and in the CVR jurisdiction. Each questionnaire, questioner is permitted to ask one question plus one follow-up question related to the answer. The question must be truly be a question and not statement of opinion or speech.
Thank you. Uh, question period? Mic is open.
Hello.
Hey, hi. So it's pretty evident that, um, the bylaws are very unclear and not understood within this room itself as, and even extend out into the community. So how are we as a community supposed to understand these written bylaws that are said to propose or be, uh, prohibit certain things when even within this room, there's such confusion?
Uh, I would say that it's always a property owners, like, I know I have questions about my property. I email Land Use Staff, and they can provide me clear, uh, direction on what's permitted or not permitted on the property I own.
Okay, and I have done that, and I've received pretty ignorant responses from certain people within the CVRD.
So this is not a debate. I'm going to give you your follow-up question. If you have any further questions, I can direct you to our planning director, and she can assist.
Sure, okay. So my follow-up question would be, um, I have been told that because STR um, is not explained or defined within the bylaws, that it's prohibited, but long-term rentals is also not defined within the bylaws, so how come those are not also prohibited?
Yeah. Not sure that's the case. Um, so your assertion doesn't align with my understanding, but if you have specific questions about the zoning bylaws that are appropriate for your property or properties, um, it would be best to direct it to the planning department, and if you've had issues with a specific staff member, I would suggest Ms. Trow would be the best person to send it to.
Okay, and yeah, I have sent it to multiple people.
Okay.
Without a answer, though.
Yeah, well, Ms. Trow, I can say as the director will assure you, your question gets answered.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public question period?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Um, there is a lot of, uh, debate around the short-term rental and opting in, opting out of Bill thirty-five once again. And would it have benefited the directors to at least go to their APCs prior to bringing this to the board?
I think the individual directors would have to answer that. I think that it's been quite clear by the province that they are pushing for uh, more stringent regulations around short-term rentals. Um, I think, you know, there's separate opinions with each area director, as we saw today during the discussion on how they view short-term rentals. I can give you my opinion, but as a municipality, we've opted in for the full measure because we recognize that the value of long-term housing, especially when some folks and Director Segal said it best commoditize housing, own two or three or four properties, use them as short-term rentals, taking them out of the long-term rental market. That hurts everyone in every level of our society. Um, and then when we are asking why hotels are being closed down and repurposed for other uses, um, why don't we have hotels? There's, there's a lot of varying opinions on short-term rentals. I think that that, facts are quite clear since short-term revel, rentals have become so prolific, both in the municipalities and the electoral areas. We have a rental housing crisis. We have folks that have commoditized housing and are paying more than their full mortgages on these homes, sometimes multiple homes as short-term rentals. Well, we can't find long-term rentals for workers, seniors, all levels. Yeah, getting into an ideological speech, so I'll save it for that, but.
I was going to say.
The, 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 the positions vary, right? And I think that if folks, um, believe that their APCs are a good feedback mechanism, we heard earlier today that this can be, this is an annual process around the opt-in piece. And, um, I think that the, if there are unintended consequences that we'll see them over the next year, and the electoral area services directors can amend their, their recommendations through to staff next year.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chair, and I would agree, but I do try to form it in a question for you. Does it automatically mean that all these units, and I, I have no, I have no short-term rental
Interest.
Properties myself, right? Um, but is it assumed that the short-term rentals will automatically go to the rental be, pool? Because what we're seeing is, is affordability.
Yeah.
Right? And that's, that's the issue. So we're, we're.
So if you want me to answer the question, I don't think it's assumed that, because even the province has said when they announced all these new regulations and measures, that there's, there's an expectation of a certain percentage. I think what they're trying to dissuade is people from commoditizing housing. It's become a commodity in our province and and more broadly in the industrialized world over the last number of years. Um, as protections for renters have come in, long-term renters, a lot of property owners have decided to, instead of investing in long-term rental properties, turn them into short-term rentals. You service them through a twelve-month or a twelve-week hot season. You can pay your annual mortgage, and they can remain vacant the rest of the time. Um, in my area, some people do both. So they have nine months of rentals and three months of short-term rentals. Um, I also know that those are permitted under the zoning bylaw, but the enforcement, um, requirements and costs of enforcing the bylaws are a big component of it, both for municipalities and regional districts. The province is providing a little muscle to local governments to help assist, um, with the growing challenges. Um, you're not going to fix everything with legislation. You often find unintended consequences, and that's why legislation can be amended. And that's why the directors who've opted out or opted in, um, today can look at how those impacts in the commu- you know, sort of affect the community over the next year and, and adjust decisions accordingly when that opportunity comes up for next year.
I think, uh, unintended con- consequences, we'll see.
We'll see.
We'll see what happens, because I'm sure there'll be lots of effective things.
Thanks. I always give you a little bit of latitude, Ms. Kaufman. Any more question period? Seeing none, I'll have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Robbins.
That is correct. A motion to adjourn, just a reminder that.
Oh, session committee of the whole.
That you recessed and you're going to go back.
Yep.
Remain on this WebEx.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Director Istash, seconded by Director Segal. All those in favor, any opposed, unopposed, we are adjourned. And, uh, just stay on this WebEx, and.